Well, why don't you just, if you would, start out just telling us a little bit about what compelled you to, to make this run for council?
Well, I was sitting there and reading the paper like I normally do. And then I've seen the, the, uh, the twenty million project about the parking ramp. I was like, we don't need another parking ramp. You know, I figured the twenty million dollars is a big waste of money because we have plenty of parking ramps. And I feel that we have other ones that could be updated or fixed or even tore down and rebuilt because the city already owns the land. And I just feel it was wasteful spending when, when I started thinking more on the stuff. I was like, well, kids around here, they don't have much going on, you know? Like with like football programs, you know, like football on the weekends and stuff like that. And there's not really a lot of programs down here for the kids. It seems like everything's uptown. And so I kind of like to get something going down here for the kids and get, get their brains engaged in certain things to maybe excel them to go into different, uh, educational career paths for themselves and not have to, you know, kind of, I don't know, be outside causing trouble and, you know, help them learn some respectful manners for people and stuff like that and just try to make the third ward better and city in general better for everybody.
And so would you like to see that programming through the leisure services or how would it tie into the city council?
So, the thing that, okay, so my plan would be, is what I want to try doing is, you know, get some grants and learn about different grants from different areas. I, I guess the leisure service would have to come into play because it involves kids in like an after-school type deal thing. So, so I don't know what the old bus barn is, uh, being used for on, on, uh, central there, the old Keyline Bus Station. So I thought that that there could be converted into a nice educational thing for kids. Like maybe turn the upstairs, because I was talking to quite a few people and, and they, their, their concern is there's not a lot to do for, with, for kids around here. You know, like one fellow I was talking to, his son plays the drums. And he's like, he was, he's like, well, why don't you play your drums? He's like, because I'll never be any good. And, you know, I kind of felt bad for the little guy. I was like, like, man, you can be whatever you want. And nobody's stopping you but yourself. So then that's part of the reason I want to get another program in there, like maybe make a music room to where these kids can kind of go there and play music together and stuff like that. And then the big garage area where they had the buses parked, I kind of would like to see if we could, um, put like a small engine repair thing in there, like snow blowers and, and lawnmowers and stuff like that. To maybe engage some kids' brains into stuff like that. So then if they fix, if they can fix a, a lawnmower for their neighbor down here, because they can't afford to take it uptown, then it's, it's a prideful thing for that, that, uh, individual to, you know, hey, I just asked for my neighbor and save him some money and, and stuff like that. And then I would also like to incorporate some other areas of that building to, you know, maybe put in some like, like a plumbing section, uh, maybe electrical. Um, just create a safe place to get the kids off the streets and kind of motivate them to do good things with themselves instead of, you know, feeling like they can't do nothing. And there's nobody there to help guide them.
And, and so, so this would be a city-run program?
Uh, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And is, I mean, that building, are you just bringing that up because of where it's located and the fact that the city owned it?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, because I might, so I, I am, my main concern is, is kind of for the third ward. I, I like the whole city as a whole. That's my concern, but my real focus is on the third ward because I feel, I kind of feel it's neglected down here a little bit. Um, you know, I feel there's like big projects that are, that are started that are not finished and they're kind of like eyesores to the residents here. Um, even though like for a perfect example, like Bloom's, they're, they're right on the border of the third ward. You know, but it, they, they got the Brownfields grants for them to, to clean it up, but they're not finishing that project. You know, you spent the money on this building and you're losing tax revenue on it because the city owns it now. So tear that down and convert that into something beautiful. You have plans in place, finish that project. I'd like to see Comiskey finished. You know, make that a nice park and recreation area for, for the folks down there.
Yeah, I wondered about that. If you had, what you thought about the city's plans for Comiskey? So you're on board with those?
I feel that the, the citizens need to have more of a, a say on, on that. Instead of the people just saying, this is what you want, this is what you need. I feel that the, the neighbors need to be involved with, kind of like, um, you know, give your ideas and have like, you know, like if some people feel, hey, we need a softball field down here because we don't have any softball fields. You know, because back in the day down here, you know, you had like, you had Marshall had a softball field, you had Comiskey had a softball field, Otten even had a softball field. There's no softball fields down here for them. That's just an example of, of, of fun activity that these kids could be doing or just adults in general that they've taken away from us down here. And then like they used to freeze Comiskey in the winter and let people ice skate. They don't do that no more. So up at Allison Henderson, they have, uh, a universal like ice skating rink to where they can play hockey in the summer or soccer in the summer or roller skate in there. I feel that that could be a good thing for down here too, for, for the people that would like to learn how to do that too. Like the ice skating or, or like a little soccer rink for in the summer or whatnot. I just feel that the citizens need to have more input on that part and not just have the city say, hey, this is what we're doing and you're going to like it type deal.
Mm-hmm. I'm not hearing you, Dustin.
I can't hear him either.
Nope, not hearing.
It looks like, it shows you as muted. Can you try undoing it again? There. Now?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, uh, so Ricky, I just kind of on, on that point, I just wanted to ask. So with that Comiskey project, I mean, there was fairly extensive public input sought on the front end of that. They had design sessions, they had community meetings. What else were you thinking needed to be done to kind of get input there?
Okay, so on, on that aspect, I talked to a few residents down there and they said that they felt like their voices weren't being heard, that there was, there was a person that was hired from, from out of town to come down here and evaluate their whole situation on it. And a lot of the residents there were not happy with the outcome of, of the, of the meeting.
Hmm, okay.
There's actually a couple of people that live right across the street from it down there and they, they, uh, voiced their opinion to, to myself that they weren't happy with it. Because like one of the, one of the issues that they have right now is what's going on is you have all this, all these kids down there, like late at night, they, they don't, they don't control the, the noise in the racket and the trash down there, we'll just say. Um, they feel that there needs to be more of a, um, I really don't want to use the word policing, but they need to have more control of people not staying there late, late hours and and causing a ruckus and, and keeping the people up because they feel, they need to go to bed at night to get up to go to work and they have all these kids down there. You know, whether it be in summer, of course, they're going to be out running around, but they're making a lot of unnecessary noise late at night and it's not being controlled.
Okay, okay. And so, so the plan for Comiskey Park, they just felt like should address, should address that issue and that's why they're upset?
That, that, yeah, that's one of them. They, they don't like, you know, sometimes you'll have a bunch of people down there, like just the other day, there was an incident down there. A fella chasing someone down the street with a two-by-four and a bunch of people chasing after him. You know, they, there needs to be some kind of policing down there. Like whether they do a frequent patrol through there, um, turn the lights off at night, don't leave them on a switch to where people can turn them on.
Hmm, okay.
Did, did you grow up in the, in the ward Ricky or how long have you lived there?
Oh, yeah. I used to live in nineteen eleven Johnson Street, I was little boy. I used to live at twenty thirty-one Jackson Street. So, yeah, I, I'm pretty aware of the, the times and changes in this neighborhood.
Mm-hmm. How do you feel about, what do you think about the B branch, uh, development through there and, uh, you know, the bike path and things like that? Have, have those amenities been well received?
Uh, yeah. So, so my only concern, um, really a complaint about the B branch is, is that I take my, uh, my niece down there a lot to go feed the ducks and stuff because we're right here, you know, it's within walking distance easily. Um, I feel there needs to be more trash cans down there. And because there's not, there's a lot of litter bugs around here and I feel that, that, because we're always picking up trash down here when we see it. So I feel there needs to be, uh, a few more trash cans along, along that out path. And, you know, I feel, I feel, um, I feel it's a good, it's a good, good thing so far.
Mm-hmm. I know, um, a few years ago, they, the city talked a lot about building up the central corridor and, um, trying to do more restoration of homes and get more, more building, uh, um, more businesses down there and storefronts. What, what, how would you rate that effort and what do you think needs to be done there?
So, um, on a side note, I, I actually took advantage of one of the city programs from housing, uh, for the restoration of my home.
Okay.
And they did, they do have some really good programs there. Because we had to get some brick repaired on our house and some new windows and it was, it was way above our budget. So that, that program actually helped us out. Um, it was a rehab loan to the city and, and it was great. And I feel, to your question on the central corridor, I think that would be a great, great thing for downtown. And the thing is, is if we can get the semis to use the arterials and get them out of downtown.
Yeah, that's interesting. Have, have you noticed, uh, less semis since the Southwest arterial was completed?
Uh, it's, it's a little bit, but one thing I do notice, so when I take, when I go to work, I, I, you know, I shoot down an elm and I go over, I hit the overpass to get on the highway. And a lot of times I'm running into these, um, the wind, the wind turbines coming down the highway. And I don't know why they're trying to take that little, we call it the wiggle, that little turn there from, come from the highway going up fifty-one there. Why don't they just go right out to the arterial and, and use the new Southwest arterial and shoot over? I don't know if they're not being advised at their shipping location or not. But yeah, that's something I'd like to change too. But central, the central corridor is doing good. I feel we need to get, I know that there's a lot of, uh, smaller businesses going in there I've seen and, you know, like the pop-up shops and stuff, and that's great too. And I just feel if we have more, more of the, uh, the better, the more businesses going in there, I, I think then the people down here will have more pride and want to get out and be, uh, courteous to their neighbors and meet new people and stuff. And I feel it would be, uh, better for everyone around here if that was fixed up.
Have you been, um, going out and knocking on doors to try to campaign or what have you been doing to kind of get your word out about your candidacy?
So, I've, uh, I've got quite a few signs out there. I've been knocking on doors, um. We just finished our pamphlet now, so I'm going to make the, the next run and go, go hit a bunch more doors to get my name out there.
Mm-hmm. What kinds of stuff are you hearing from people when, that they're concerned about when you, when you're knocking on doors? What do people bring up to you as far as the issues?
Um, I feel a lot of people are saying that the voices aren't heard. Um, we have, we have a lot of individuals that complain about noise ordinances, we'll say. Um, with people having loud stereos parked down in front of their house like all night long, just playing their music. And they, they feel like they're, they're, their quote unquote is, you, they're rattling our whole house and there's nothing being done about it. So, a lot of noise complaints, um, and there are a lot of people saying that stuff's not being finished. Like I stated before, and they're wondering why the parks are kind of being neglected around here too. Like, like A Y McDonald's, you know, they park up there. They spent a lot of money on there with the donation and it's, it's kind of being neglected. You know, you have, you have weeds that are two, three feet tall and, and so they're not just recently weeds. And then when you go to Eagle Point Park and then myself being from down here and the other folks that I've talked to around here, Eagle Point Park has always been known as the, the jewel of Dubuque. Because it's right on the river and if we're the masterpiece on the river, I feel that should be taken priority over a lot of these parks. Not saying all parks should be neglected. I think they should all be treated the same. But Eagle Point Park is the masterpiece on the rivers. We're calling Dubuque here. Is that that should have, you know, back in the day, they had the nice pristine flowers all the time up there. So we actually were up there the other day and there's actually bathrooms with holes in the side of them, like rotted wood. That's unacceptable. That is very unacceptable. And you go up to Flora Park, their bathrooms are brand new built ones. Um, I know back in the day, a lot of folks used to play horseshoes at Eagle Point Park and those pits are kind of beat up and rundown. But then you go to Flora and those ones are beautiful. And the trees that are overgrown, they're choking out the grass. So they need to be trimmed back a little bit to let the vegetation grow and, and to thrive.
Okay.
Ricky, you had mentioned some stuff that you said were unfinished and I, I think you provided an example. I wasn't sure I heard you correctly, but are you saying that there's some, some rehab projects or some businesses or what, what was it that's unfinished in, uh?
Bloom project he mentioned, you know, the Bloom, uh, what was it?
Bloom's Junkyard, uh,
Yeah.
Um, Comiskey. And then, um, the, the Green Alley's, they're not finished. They keep pushing that date back too. Um,
Yeah, I think the Green Alley's was always a pretty long-term project, you know, it was going to take decades, but they just do a few at a time, but.
So, so on, on that one there, it was supposed to be finished in twenty twenty-nine, but man, it got pushed back to twenty-fourth. I, I don't understand that. And then like the North End's, uh, Storm Tour, that was supposed to be done twenty twenty-five. Now they pushed that to twenty twenty-nine. That, that would definitely help with a lot of flooding down there. Because there's still people down there that are getting water in their basement when we get a good rainstorm. The B branch has helped a lot. But there's still issues with the rain down there. And I feel that that's, according to the city's website, that, that project there is estimated at like one point four million. So if that is, number is true, then there is other things that they're putting on their plate in front of this, which would be, something would be beneficial to the flooding down there to help out those folks.
And ha- have you heard feedback from people regarding, um, Five Flags and the, the proposal to, to rebuild Five Flags with a bigger?
Yeah, I knew this was question was coming. This is, this seems to be a hot topic with some people. Some people get pretty hot under the collar when you bring up this subject. Okay, so my, my opinion on that is, um, I, I feel from what I've been reading in these numbers I've been seeing too with people, that the Five Flags is, is not turning a profit. Um, the numbers I've been seeing, they, they've been losing money on it. So if you're going to invest in something, I feel that that, that place or that venue should be turning a profit. Because then that means that you should be expanding because your place is too small. But if you're losing money on that place, I think you need to find some, you need to ask the question, why are we losing money on it? Um, perfect example to me, um, you have a county fair that books bigger acts, like, like concerts, bigger venues than the Five Flags Center does. Why are these county fairs getting big-name acts, but Five Flags is not? Um, it's just, if, if you show a profit on that, then I, I would see, say, you know, you need a, a bigger, bigger venue. But if you're not turning a profit, I think you need to show a profit before you, you get a bigger building. And that seventy-nine million, I think that's the price tag they're putting on it. That seventy-nine million could go for a lot of upgrades in this community throughout Dubuque. And you could take some of that money and upgrade Five Flags and get some, you know, whatever issues they have in there to, to upgrade them to make it run more efficiently and smoothly down there. We just were at the, um, the James Murray thing at, uh, at the Five Flags Theater. You know, it's a very nice place and, you know, it, it wasn't, it wasn't a full house. It was, you know, it was, it was a good crowd, but not a sellout crowd. So, and that, that's just my two cents on it. You have like the Mississippi Moon Bar and then you have like the, the Backwater Stage. They bring in, well, the Backwater Stage for sure, they, they had Nellie there. And I feel that they took Nellie from Five Flags because he first came here and he was at Five Flags. Then he went to the, the Backwater Stage and, and it's a better venue for him. So, that's the questions I would have to ask. Why are we not getting big-name people to come to and why are we losing money on a building and why would you need to make a bigger building on a building that you're already losing money on?
Right. And I think that, uh, the Five Flags, uh, folks have said that it is, that they need a bigger venue to be able to attract, uh, the, the, the size of, uh, of acts that they're looking for that would, would allow them to, um, to, to, to turn a profit or at least, uh, lose less, um, money. And that, uh, uh, that it is a, also a, a, a community amenity that brings people into the community, helps attract , um, people keep from outside, uh, either for visits or for, or, or moving here, so.
So they, they actually have, I think it seats five thousand or fifty-two hundred seats in there. So you could, in my opinion, I'm not, I'm not a, I, I don't go around booking events all the time. But I feel if the Backwaters is pulling bigger names, then they should be able to because it's about the same amount of seating. Um, and truthfully, I feel, so Dubuque is a good hub in between big cities. You know, you have the Wisconsin Bridge, you have the Illinois Bridge. You can, you can go Chicago, you can go to Milwaukee, you can go to Des Moines, you can go all these bigger cities quickly from this hub here. And there's a lot of bigger names that will roll through a town. And if they have a break, they will kind of downsize their, their show a little bit, like their, their big, big stage and all that other stuff to accommodate a smaller venue. So I feel that, that they can get better stuff. But that's just my opinion. Like I said, I, I, I don't book stuff, but I feel if you're not turning a profit, then you, you shouldn't be putting the taxpayers on a big hook for seventy-nine million dollars.
Uh, Ricky, as you're, as you're out and about, I mean, you've hit on, hit on some of the things that you're hearing from folks and, and you've mentioned a couple of times here that folks feel like maybe they're not being heard or, or what? I mean, so, you know, you get elected in November, how do you kind of change the way that works? Uh, it feels like every candidate that runs for office says, I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen to people better. Um, what, what would kind of be your plan to, to put that into action?
Um, hmm. I would, you know, I, I would, everybody says they're going to listen to more people, but I would try to get out there and talk to more people. I'm still a good people person. Um, a lot of people say that they're not, their voices aren't being heard because, because nobody's talking to them. I would get out there and try talking to people and see what they say. You know, I go to market every Saturday, you know, and I always, you know, listen to all the, the people down there talking and stuff like that. I would just try to get the community more involved. And it's sometimes it's hard, huh?
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's sometimes it's hard to get people to open up a little bit when they feel that if they say something and nothing gets done, they feel, why should I even bother? Because what I say doesn't even, it falls, it falls on deaf ears, we'll say.
And do you have specific concerns or complaints about, about the representation you've gotten the last couple of years from Danny Sprang?
Can you repeat that?
I'm just wondering about, uh, your opponent and whether you have, are there specific things that, like votes that Danny Sprang has, has taken that maybe you would have done differently or, um, other concerns about him and how he has represented your ward?
I feel that, that he, he kind of doesn't listen to folks around here. You know, I've, I've had people that live down by him said, you know, he, he doesn't listen to us. Here's a perfect example. It's, it's not him being on the council or nothing like that. Um, for my, my thoughts are if, if you're on the council and you're at an event that's in your neighborhood, right across street from your house and, and this was before he even knew that I was running. I was down there with my girlfriend and, 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 uh, our niece and we were walking around and stuff and he was within a good, um, five feet with, with us, about a good handful of times. And I kind of, and I think he was, I can't say for sure. I think he was trying to get, you know, get his little paper going for, for reelection to get his, to turn his paper in. And he never even once tried to talk to us. If, if you're, if you're a man of the, of the community of the ward, I feel you would be trying to talk to all kinds of people down there at the, it was the, the National Night Out thing is what we did. Um, and I feel that they, they're quick to vote, they're quick to vote seven-zero on stuff. Like with the, um, like with the Five Flags, they, they all, you know, they're, yeah, that's a great idea, seven-zero. And then the parking ramp thing, you know, they're quick to vote seven-zero, yeah, we need this, it's a great opportunity. But then now you have one of the, one of the candidates saying he doesn't agree with his, his, uh, people, the, his cohorts on the council. And then, um, I don't even know if this is really, has anything to do with anything. I was watching one of the council meetings and, and he made the comment, Danny Sprang made the comment of more or less on the lines of the way I took it is he doesn't like his neighbors because they don't pick up trash. And this was on the council, on public TV. So you can go look and find it if you need to. It's, it's right there. He says he doesn't like his neighbors about picking up trash. Um, if you're, if you're a councilman, you shouldn't be saying you do not like people, especially your neighbors. And some of them people I probably think have signs in his, of his in their yard. Um, me, I'm, I'm not going to be mad at somebody if they dropped some trash on the ground. You don't even know if the trash came from them or if it blew from somewhere else.
Yeah, I, I don't know the incident you're referring to, but I, I have heard him talk about that that is something he hears from constituents that his constituents complain about neighbors leaving trash. So, uh, but maybe that was sort of, came across wrong.
So, so it's picking up trash thing. I, I'm always out for trash. I'm always, when I'm out there picking the trash, I'm talking to my neighbors. I'm not saying, hey, you, you know, what are you doing? Why are you doing this? Because I don't know if it came from down or if it blew from somewhere else. You know, there's always trash blowing around. So just do the right thing and pick it up. It, it really doesn't matter how it got there. Just pick it up and throw it away. Don't, don't, don't blame people for something they didn't do.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons why too, I feel that we need more trash cans along the B branch.
And Ricky, if you were elected, what do you think would be the most difficult part for you personally about, about holding office and, and serving on the council?
Oh. What would be the hardest part? Well, I know, I know I wouldn't be home a lot. I'd, I'd be going a bunch of different directions to get out there to communicate with people and see what, what their issues are and try to create better opportunities for people around here.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, that's a tough question.
Hmm. What do you, what do you feel like the time commitment is for the, a role like that?
What do you mean?
Oh, how many hours a week it might, uh, might take, um, to either, you know, be at meetings or talking to constituents or reaching out like you're talking about?
Well, the, the thing is, is I, you know, I've never been in public office, so I can't really put a pinpoint of, uh, timeframe. But from what I've noticed, like the meetings I've been seeing on, on the council meetings, I know that's for sure, at least a couple of hours right there. And then, you know, throughout the day or weekends, you're probably gonna look at five, about twenty hours, I think. But the thing with not having to go to meetings, you know, I, I, we can have people come to our house and talk to them here, which is a luxury too. Or I can go to their houses too, or I'll go to functions, like fun functions and hang out with people and kind of meet them and see what their issues are. You know, it's just, just have to get out there and meet people and listen to what they want and their concerns. And, and I obviously know that, but one, one person told me, they've made the comment, they said, why are you running for this? I don't know. You're crazy. And one thing you gotta remember, you're not gonna make everybody happy. Someone's always gonna be mad at you. I said, well, we'll try to fix that.
Um, as we go through this process, we, we do look at, uh, the, each candidate, whether it be for council. And right now we're doing school board as well, so we've got, we've got probably fifteen candidates between the two. Um, and we will look up, uh, criminal history to see if there's anything there that people should be concerned out about. And then we also will look at the voting records to see if, uh, those folks running, um, are in the habit of voting. So have you been a voter consistently? Do you usually vote in elections?
Yeah, I just started when we had the big, uh, Trump Biden thing. That's when I kind of got into the politics situation.
Okay, just this past year?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, it looks like you did have a conviction on your record. Did that impact your voting, uh, rights? Were, did you have to get voting rights restored or?
Um, yes, I got, I got my, my rights back from law, from Ms. Kim Reynolds.
Okay.
You know, you know, I, I, I was raised by a single mother. I worked for everything I have. I, I'm living proof that even though I grew up with a lot of struggles in my life, anything is possible. You know, I made poor decisions, although they do not define me. Given every opportunity, I never take things for granted and with hard work, common sense, anything is possible, you know? I've, I've made mistakes. I've grown up. I'm, I'm not perfect by all means. And, and my decisions in life do not, um, reflect on my past history. It's what I feel is right, like in, in my life, and I feel that it's right for people. And anybody knows me knows I'm not that person that I was a long time ago. Um, you know, I'm the type of guy who, if I see you in a, a snowstorm and your car stuck, I'll get out and help you push it, push yourself out. You know, if you're down and you're lucky, you, you need some money, if I have some extra money, I'll give you some money. If you need help moving, I'll help you. I'm not that guy I used to be. I don't even drink or do anything like, like that. I would, I can honestly say that in probably the last twenty years, I've had two drinks, alcoholic burgers.
Wow, yeah, yeah. And, and I wasn't gonna, you know, get in, get into the history of something that happened twenty years ago. I just, I, it just, with the voting thing, I did wanna, I just was kind of curious about that. But I guess that makes sense that if that happened, um, just, I think that was just in the, in the past year or so, or nineteen or twenty, that.
I, I, I thank you for that. And, uh, I knew, I knew this issue was gonna come up, you know? Cause it's kind of like, um, kind of like a black eye. It, it, you know? I, I'm trying, I'm just trying to prove to people in the, and this might sound silly to you guys, but it doesn't sound silly to me. My mother and my grandmother, they both passed away. They were, uh, very instrumental in me getting on the right path, we'll say. And, and I, and even though they're not here, I believe that they're still watching and I will never let them down again.
Yeah, it doesn't sound silly at all. I think that's very nice. Um, you know, we appreciate your, uh, your, your interest in stepping up to serve because there are a heck of a lot of people that have the same concerns or, or thoughts that you have and, and would never put themselves out there like you're doing, so, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. And I know it's, it, this is, this is a, this is a lot to take off for me. I've never done anything, but, and the weird crazy thing about it is I kind of like it and I think it's pretty interesting. You know, you, you start digging and you see, oh, well, they, they actually have this for people. Oh, they can do this for people. Oh. You know, there's, don't get me wrong, the city does have a lot of good programs for, for people. They do, they do have a lot of good programs. But I feel, like I said, I feel like the, the third ward, it's pretty much the lower downtown third ward. You know, I, I actually live on the twentieth park. So basically the twentieth on down to twenty-sixth. And then, you know, you spread your wings up to the left a little bit, up to the right. I feel that that's the majority of folks down here that feel they don't have much down here for them. So that's why I kind of feel that if you incorporated a nice park down here, took care of Eagle Point Park, get that back up there to where it needs to be, you know, post-guard ready like it used to be. And I feel a lot of people will start coming back down here. And the thing that I want to get rid of is I want to get rid of people, like, like that incident that happened the other day with the kid chasing the guy down the street with a two-by-four down by Comiskey. And then you get on social media and people are like, oh, that's the hood, that's the ghetto, I, you know, that's why I left there. I want to change that. I, I don't, I want people to say, hey, there's some nice people down there. I, I wouldn't mind going back down there and hanging out at the park, go play some, some softball or soccer or, you know? And then, you know, maybe even put some little picnic areas down there. And one thing too, with that, uh, with the Comiskey Park Plan, I feel that they should kind of make some kind of border along the, the houses with some, some kind of trees or privacy fence to help the neighbors with the noise. I feel, I feel that would be a good, a good thing down there for the folks.
Yeah, okay. Anything else to wrap up that we, uh, we should have asked you about or any other issues you wanted to mention?
I'm actually shocked you guys didn't ask about the parking ramps. Though, oh yeah, we did talk about the parking ramp. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
I was gonna say, I think we opened with parking ramp, but, um,
Yeah, we, we did, we did. I was just, I was just trying to.
About that one a lot.
Yeah, trying to cover all the bases. Oh, so the parking ramp thing, I feel that, I don't know if I said it, but you know, they, they, uh, did the Locust Street Ramp, the Locust Street Bluff Ramp, the one right by you guys.
Mm-hmm.
If, if they fix that up, they could put some nice skywalks, I feel, into the two buildings. That would really help with people not having to go out in the inclement weather, kind of like they do down Iowa City and the hospitals and stuff like that. All them cool skywalks. I think that'd be something cool to put in down there for the folks. And then plus I think Harlan Financial and, uh, the Fisher Building would benefit better with a parking ramp right there. Instead of having to trounce through the inclement weather all the way down to five, three or five blocks away, whatever it is, you know? I don't know. We're gonna try our best to make things right and better around here for people.
Yeah. Well, Ricky, we appreciate your time and, um, this is, so this is for our editorial purposes. There, a, a reporter would, would probably be catching up with you as well for, if, if he hasn't already. Let's see, Dustin, is, he probably has, I guess we, we did something when you announced, but there was, we'll still be doing something else for a, a preview, so that's probably John Cruz will reach out.
Yeah. I was gonna say, was it Mr. Cruz again? He was, uh, he, he was, uh, very pleasant to talk to for my first interview.
No, that's good. Yeah, he covers the, the city council and so he's at all the meetings, so this, that's kind of his area. Um, so he will probably be the one making those calls, so.
Yeah, he, uh, he kind of called me off guard, cause, cause we just turned in the papers and I actually just got in the shower and all of a sudden he's like, hey, this is Johnny Cruz with a telegraph here. I'm like, what? But like I just turned in my papers, like an hour later.
Yep, he's on top of it.
Yeah, he's, uh, he definitely is. He's, uh, he's, he's a keeper, we'll say.
Yeah.
He is that, he is that good.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And it's funny too, when I start reading, when I start reading stuff, right away I look to see if it's Johnny who's writing the article. And there, there his name is. Yep, it's him.
Yeah, he would probably be writing a lot of the articles of interest to you, cause that's, he covers cities, so.
Yeah, Mr. Johnny on the spot.
Yeah.
I like that. So, so I have a, I have a really odd question, let's say. So, so I kind of feel like certain people are connected to certain people. Um, so like, if I see if something's weird or doesn't seem right to me, like let's just use John for an example. If, if, could I call him and say, hey, could you, could you check on something like, maybe see if I'm missing something here, like a past article or something? Would he be willing to help? You know, like pull up an old article or on something, not saying anything in particular, but just something like out of the ordinary.
I'm, I guess it kind of depends what it is, but, um, and he's, I mean, the reporters are fairly busy with their stuff, but we certainly have folks that could help you find a past article if you needed it. Um, you know, send an email over and we can have somebody, you know, email you what we've written about it.
Okay. Well, that, that's good then. That, that'll help me with my, uh, research team here. She's, uh, she's pretty good at this stuff. I, I'm very thankful for, for the little help I have here. But yeah, that's all, that's the only question I really had.
Sure, yep.
Yeah, and, and as a subscriber, uh, Ricky, um, you can do an online search, uh, on all of our archives and going back to, I think, the nineties. Uh, sometimes, so, so, uh, you know, if you're a subscriber, you can just do the little search, uh, up at the top and you can even, you can put in the, the words you're looking for or the topic or the dates and stuff. And you can do searches online, um, as a subscriber too, so that's available to you directly.
Okay.
Yeah, that works pretty well. Good engine.
Awesome.
All right, well, good to talk with you. Thanks for your time. Good luck the rest of the way.
Well, it was nice, yeah, it was nice meeting all of you and, uh, thank you for the opportunity and.